That's what Daddy Hilton needed. Folks, 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 I'm gonna get, let's get started. We're live, folks. Ascension Parish zoning session. Zoning committee is now in session. Note that all commissioners are available with the exception of Mr. Bishop. First item on agenda. 5A acceptance of the meeting, minutes of the meetings.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair?
Can I get a second?
I'll second. Mr. Verge has moved to approve the minutes of the zoning commission meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
And it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So noted, unanimous. 5B, accept the minutes of meeting. It will night joint planning and zoning. Can I get a motion, please?
I still move, move we accept.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So noted unanimous. Chairman has no comments? First item, condition to use, 7A zoning review. A and B were pulled?
Yes.
Okay. 8A zoning review portion, track B, William and Mary, Mary Lee Dixon.
James Fogg representing Girls and Associates and Ms. Dixon on the following zoning request. Asking the commission for approval.
Staff comments?
Yeah, the staff recommendation to accept the mixed use as requested based on the surrounding uses being compatible with the requested zoning district. This is on the corner of Highway 30 and St. Landry Road. It's across the street, I believe, from the racetrack. Yeah, kind of corner from, I'm saying, yes.
Right on the city parish line.
Yes, right on the city parish line, one side of the, St. Landry is in the city, the other side is in the parish. Right now presently is, it's zoned light industrial. And what they're asking for is to change it to mixed use so it'd be compatible with the, with the surrounding area, I guess you could say, surrounding uses.
I have a question.
Sure.
Lance, if you could answer, the surrounding, the surrounding properties, they're zoned for light industrial now, or mixed use now?
No, they're, they're light industrial now, existing.
They're light industrial now, we're wanting to go mixed use, so it's not a non-conforming issue, is it?
No, sir, no, sir.
This one would kind of stick out. Light industrial, I mean, you're wanting mixed use in the middle of light industrial is what we're trying to do?
Well, it's on the corner of, of Highway 30 and, and St. Landry Road, and right now, correct, is, it is zoned light industrial, and they want to ask for mixed use to, how those uses that are in the surrounding areas that are there, retail, hotel, those type of things that would be permitted.
But the hotel and retail that's there now?
That is all in the city.
That's our, because it's on the city line, like you said.
That's correct, yeah, and this actually where the hotel is, I believe, yeah, was actually in the city, or in the parish, in the city annex that it.
Open the floor for public comments. Close the floor for public comments. Can I get a motion, accepted, denied? I move for acceptance.
Yeah, I'll second the motion. I feel like it, it fits.
Recommend, recommendation?
All in favor?
Recommendation to the council.
Yes.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So noted, unanimous?
Thank you.
Next item, 8B zoning review. Track 2, 3, for Janine Brown, Ronald Brown, Kermit Bro.
My name is Kristy Bro Lobel. I'm here on behalf of Ronald Bro, Daryl Bro, Kermit Bro Jr., Janine Bro Brown, and Carolyn Bro Reams, and respectfully requesting a rezoning from residential to commercial on the five acre property on Seabro Road in Dutch Town. More specifically located at the intersection of Interstate 10 and Highway 73. Said property is designated as track 2 on the map. Our family is currently wanting to sell the property as one track when combined with the adjacent five acres of Mr. Merrill H. Pookie Bro, which is already zoned as commercial. We would be able to offer approximately 10 acres of prime property for sale. Given that this location offers a multitude of uses, the hope is that a commercial retail developer would be interested in the site. It is approximately five miles by interstate from East Baton Rouge Parish and five miles to the Highway 30 exit off of I-10. The property across the street from this property, we are requesting to be rezoned, is also zoned commercial. This sale would bring not only permitting fees and construction, but also taxes, permanent jobs to the parish. We would appreciate your consideration of this request.
Staff comments?
The recommendation was to accept the mixed use as requested to be continuous with the same zoning as well as across the street, and to encourage redevelopment of that highly visible location. So the recommendation was to accept the rezoning request to MU. Staff recommendation?
At the time, at this time, we'll open the floor for public comments. Any, any comments, step up to the mic, please?
Hello. My name is Sheila Malonsaw, and I own the adjacent property. I'm here to oppose the rezoning. All of this property once belonged to my grandparents. They divided their property among their three children when Interstate 10 came through and took all of their property. After my parents died, my sister and I inherited our portion. Before my sister died, she divided her portion between her three children so that they would have a place to live. And she died with peace of mind knowing this. I have given my son a portion of my property so he has built a home there to raise his family. When the lot across the street went up for rezoning, it was denied by the commission. If the rezoning passes, I think that it will greatly reduce the value of my property as well as my sons and my nephews. The road in intersection with Highway 73 is already congested. This will only add to the problem. If this is rezoned, the only fair thing for the commission to do is just rezone all of Seabro Road. But this road has always been residential, and I hope it remains so. Thank you.
Ricky, I might, if I can interrupt real quick.
Sir, turn.
I, I noticed, I see Gaspar, I heard you say, you didn't have this. I noticed that in the packet that we got mailed to us, that it was not...
It was not in the packet?
Right, this one was not specifically in the packet. I did pull it off the Novus, and I did in a hurry, and I would have printed more copies, and I didn't. But I have it right here. If I can just pass it down with you guys to look at. The map that I see Donald has, and I think everybody had in the packet, is the same map, but it just gives a little bit more information.
But this is a map without the other information.
And I have, and the other information, right, and it's on Novus, if y'all have your pad with you. It is on Novus, it's, it was in order. But something got out of order and mixed up with it.
What's this map?
Like I say, the map's there, but the information's not.
I've got it on this.
What does that do to us, Lance, talking about this?
Yes, sir.
What does this do, us talking about this, make sure?
Yeah, it was, it was notified, I mean, it was advertised, I mean, everything's fine, yes, sir. Yeah, we met all those requirements.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, I'm sorry.
Everything's been done, yes, sir.
That lot next to it, between this property and the church, we previously denied changing that from residential. There was a request for that lot to be changed from residential to commercial. We denied it because our residents across the street here, you know...
Is it property that we're...
Is it that, or is it this?
This is what we're looking at today, this is already zoned commercial, correct.
This is zoned. Is that, that tire shop, is that what's there, now that?
Yeah, Diaz.
That's what's across the street from, was already zoned commercial. What's across the street from this property is, is nothing.
Well, that tire shop's not directly across the street?
It's directly across from the five acres in front of this property.
And I interrupt a public comment.
Clarity as a commissioner?
Well, thank you, Mr. Commissioner. But yeah, I would imagine we need to move, we can move forward with that.
Any further public comments? Please state your name.
My name is William Brown. I'm married to Janine Bro Brown. And the property across from this
Start the clock.
property adjacent on, on Seabro Road is commercial, straight parallel to it, which was sold by the Bro's. And, you know, it's, it's all commercial, across the road, parallel to this property. It was all in a, in a family deal, and they sold, you know, sold about seven, eight years ago to Chet Simpson.
The property across the street?
Right.
Is that where the tire shop is?
I know, I know when we denied the, changing the zoning on that property...
But this, the piece you...
Next to the church.
...a little further down.
Right. We denied the one next to the church, it was because there was, that there was a house directly across the, the road from it.
Right.
And, you know, that, it didn't, it seemed...
And he's 100 foot off the property line, which is, gives him plenty of room, buffers from whatever they put there. But they, they needed to sell this property seven, eight years ago, which they got part of, part of the money. And now, they want to sell this, and they don't want something there, but they, that's just the way it happens.
Well, are you speaking for, are you, you're in opposition for this, or are you?
No, I'm for it.
Are you for this, that's what I'm kind of getting the impression, are you for this? Okay.
This is the same area we've denied?
No, we denied this right here. Right.
Yes.
This piece, when they, they want, that's right next to the church. You know, the argument, the argument that the person who came before us to ask that that be changed argued that he couldn't do anything with that property, nor would buy it because it's adjacent to, to commercial property. So he wanted it zoned commercial, it was a church next door. We said no because there's a home across the, directly across the street. That lady's home. Yeah.
I remember traffic concerns and...
From, from what you're, yeah, from this, this request, I, yeah, see that.
Any further public comments?
I'm Vic Burke Jr. I live on Seabro Road. I live next to the property that was, last time was denied. The, the issue is, we have several issues on Seabro Road. Seabro Road also is a very small road, and y'all talking about commercializing another half of the road, and it can't take the traffic now. If you come to our house about, I don't know, 4 o'clock to 6 o'clock, I can't go get the mail across the street. It's the only road cuts through to Bluff. If y'all are going to allow commercial property on this small road, you either need to widen the road, you need to be guaranteed you can widen the road, or you need to commercialize the whole road and give us all access to commercial property. Because, I mean, it just doesn't make any sense that you would jam up what we've been building for the last, you know, 15, 20 years with houses to be right next door to a commercial property. Seabro Road's way too small of a road to handle that much commercial property. And I would challenge anybody to come down the road and try to take that bend in the road at 4 o'clock in the, in the afternoon. We have morning traffic problems and we have afternoon traffic problems. The, I don't know anything that'll fix it, it's the only road that cuts through to the Bluff. And everybody, the more traffic we have down Bluff Road, as they building houses, we're starting to get 18-wheelers down the road, concrete trucks down the road. So I have, I don't, I mean, I don't know if you have a suggestion for the road. I mean, it's just, it's way too small to, to support commercial property at this point. I don't, I don't have any, any solution for that, but, you know. I mean, when, when, when they were talking about selling it, when, when Chet Simpson was talking about selling the property, they talked about doing some upgrading to that curve in the road, and it hasn't been done yet. You know, I mean, you almost fall off the road whenever you take, whenever you on the right-hand land, lane, heading to 73. Y'all got any questions?
And now that parking lot's built up to the road, isn't it? Isn't it?
Yeah.
There isn't much fixing that road.
Daily I watch people, daily I watch people cut into that parking lot thinking they can cut through to go to Mission Street to only, to get jammed up to turn back around and come back on Seabro Road. It's, the problem is, if you don't live on Seabro Road, I don't guess you understand what I'm, what I'm talking about. It's, it's, it's just, it's just very congested. I don't, I don't know if y'all, is this, are they suggesting mixed use, or what are, what are they looking for, for a commercial?
What does it say on the front? I don't know.
It says commercial.
What is, what is that, what's their definition of commercial, though?
It's mixed use, that's what they're asking for.
What does that entail?
Light industrial to mix.
Mixed use, no, it's, it's RM to mixed use.
That's, that's basically anything, right? I mean, anything.
Not anything, not, not anything in heavy industrial, but commercial-wise, yes, sir.
I mean, what type of business?
Pretty heavy.
Yeah, what kind of business?
Retail, I mean, multi-families permitted.
Strip mall?
Yes, sir, strip mall, retail.
Could add a lot of traffic to.
Yes, sir.
You have no idea what kind of traffic it could add to the road?
No, 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 sir.
What the potential of it is?
Hotels, motels.
Look, I, I take Seabro Road every day, and I actually will avoid it and go through the school zone instead.
I appreciate you avoiding the road.
Only because, yeah, only because at the end, that where it hits Bluff Road,
Yeah.
you can't, it takes forever sometimes.
They just tried to widen that end at Bluff Road when they put a, a light inside, you know, I mean...
Yeah, that helped a little.
But I, but I'll, you'll wait there for quite a long time at Bluff Road to try to make a turn. I, I'd rather go through the school zone
Yeah.
to 74 and take a right.
Well, the, the, any commercial property that they're planning on doing on Seabro Road is going to exit Seabro Road. They can't go to 73, they're not, there's no, there's no entrance or exit to that commercial property to 73. They have to come on or off of Seabro Road. So it's, it's just, well, it's just very congested now. I don't see how you can put a, you know, two sides of commercial. I mean, we don't know what's coming yet on that commercial part in the front that they're talking about, us across the street from them, so I mean, that's just going to add to it also. So is there a need for more commercial property in, in, in our area? You know, I mean, is the demand there for commercial property? I mean, people are still building houses down Seabro Road, you know? I don't, I don't...
Did y'all consider mixed use too? As, as a zone? What is that like?
A lot less options for the commercial, it's light commercial.
What's that now?
And it, and, and this isn't personal against the owners of the property. What I'm saying is, if y'all, if y'all convert this to commercial property, it's just going to add more traffic to our road. That's already heavily, you know, traveled. There's no plans to widen the road, there's no shoulders on the road, there's, you know?
And we do fight substandard roads.
And we live on the road. I mean, they got school buses dropping kids off all day. I can't go, look, you do not go get the mail at 4 to 6, so you just, you can't do it, you can't cross the road. So, I mean, I'll be happy to answer any other questions, I don't, I don't...
It's a little on public hearing.
Any further public comments?
Hello, my name is Cynthia Stafford, and I actually have the property listed, and I'm trying to market the property. The first five acres is already commercial. What they wanting to do is, the first person that owns the five acres does not want to sell unless the additional five acres is all sold together. I know he's talking about the traffic congestion, and I totally, totally understand it. I live on Highway 74, and you talking about not getting your mail? You can't get nothing out almost any time of the day, even into the night. It's just that Dutch Town is crowded. But we have some 800 and something lots, I think, that y'all are fixing to approve. We need to try and keep those 800 people that are going to live on those lots in Ascension Parish. And as we grow, we just going to have to try and fix the infrastructure. So for him to say that Seabro Road is congested, I can tell you, I can list hundreds of roads that's congested, particularly mine. And if you want to say that something needs to be commercial, well, what about 74? You could make all of 74 commercial, but we live on that road and we just deal with it. We deal with it until Ascension Parish has the money to fix the infrastructure. So what I'm trying to say to you is, 800 lots y'all have approved, 800 families are going to be living on those lots. And why not have those 800 families dealing and spending money in Ascension Parish? This property is right off of I-10. When you coming off of I-10, you see the five acres that's already commercial, and you see the adjoining property that's right there. This property, I know what they saying, one house does join that property. But the owners are willing to give two lots next to that property and zone those residential. And then, of course, the property across the street is zoned commercial. And there, I can tell you right now, there's a hotel that's looking at that right now. But, you know, it's got to go somewhere. We can't stop progress because of congestion, because everybody deals with it. So that's my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comments?
My name's Brian Malonsaw, I live on Seabro Road. I'm the house adjacent that they're referring to. Also the house across the street that was denied from it. I built my house there to raise my family, I have a 10-month-old son now. And to do this commercial and not know what's going to come there and what I'm going to be living next to changes a whole lot for the whole reason why I built where I built. I mean, that was the same reason why across the street, one of the reasons it was denied is because we don't know what kind of businesses are going to move in there being next door to a church. As far as the traffic congestion, I can't get out of my driveway in the afternoons. If my girls need to go somewhere, half the time I have to leave 45 minutes early just to get off of Seabro Road to go right near Dutch Town High School. Traffic problems are huge for Seabro Road. It's not just 74 where you have traffic and it backs up. I mean, it's a residential area, it's not a main, you know, it's not a main road. I don't see how that comparison can be made. But if we're going to zone it, then why not zone it all commercial, allow me to sell as well, commercial? So I'm not being butted up next to lord knows what yet, whether it's looking to be an adult bookstore, if it'll be a medical facility, I mean, who knows? So, that's all I have to say.
The person that spoke before you mentioned something about the owners willing to give up two lot. Would you, would you explain what you meant by that?
Ms. Stafford.
Ms. Stafford?
Yeah.
Ms. Stafford? That kind of went right over my head.
I had said that. I think the owner had expressed an interest in taking two lots next to the house and making those residential lots, so that house could be protected.
What would that look like on this map? I know you don't have it.
I know I don't have it, you know, I think y'all been approving things on contingency, so maybe you could prove, approve that on a contingency.
What would that do? I mean, it looks like the line's drawn even now.
Well, that's, that would change, that changes the request, and it, and it wouldn't fit with, you know, would have to be withdrawn and redone.
The man that owns the five acres in the front, he said that he doesn't want to move off the property, so he was going to take those two lots right next to the residential home and build his house.
So I take it that one?
In the front, the two, closest to the, Seabro Road.
That would front Seabro Road, closest to the house, yes.
Behind him would be commercial? If this were changed?
If this were changed, he owns the five acres in the front that's already commercial. And then, of course, the five acres we're requesting that adjoins it to be fi, to be commercial. But within that commercial part, he would take two lots next to the home and, you know, request that that could be residential, so it would protect the home.
Do, do we have an idea of what this will be used for specifically?
Well, when you have mixed use, most of the time, I mean, you can talk about, it could be a hot, a hotel, a hospital, it could be a Walmart. But, no, but you know, we don't have a specific buyer. But at the same time, the five acres is already zoned commercial. That's, that's already there. So all we asking for is additional five acres to join it to be commercial because the road, the property across the street is zoned commercial.
That area that's adjacent to 73 and the interstate, or the, actually, 73 and the exit ramp from the interstate is...
When you're coming on, that's correct.
That's an eyesore, I mean, that, that is a incredible eyesore. I mean, it is, and we've talked about that before, and everybody knows.
Coming to a nice part of Perryville.
And, you know, that's, that's another thing, I mean, how nice would it be for a nice commercial development to be there instead of what is there?
Well, frankly, I mean, there could be a nice commercial development there without changing the rest of the area to, from residential to commercial.
Well, he, he doesn't want to sell just to find...
Well, I get that, but...
Well, so be it.
But like I said, the, the property right across the street is zoned commercial.
It's zoned commercial, but there's nothing on it, you know? I'd be more inclined to, to say we should, you know, consider changing the zoning if there were something on that property that would, that would...
Well, I, like I told you, it's for sale right now, and I mean, something could be, a purchase agreement could come on it tomorrow. We do have a hotel that's interested in it right now, but I can't promise you that that's going to take place.
But that doesn't, that doesn't really drive what we would decide, what could potentially be on it.
I mean, changing residential to commercial in a, in a generally residential area, it's adjacent to residential area, I'm just inclined not to do that.
It, but it's not really a residential.
There's nothing that drives us
No demand, I guess.
to make, to make that change unless, unless the, it was so built up commercial that it would make complete sense, it were surrounded by commercial. Donald asked a question.
It is surrounded by commercial, there's five acres that's adjoining.
It is surrounded by unimproved property on, across the street. There's commercial on the interstate side of it, but it's unimproved across the street. It's zoned, commercial, I agree.
It's on commercial, I mean, it's surrounding more commercial property than it is residential.
Okay, Donald, Donald's asking a question earlier about if you took the second five acres and changed it to mixed use 2, would that provide a buffer of quasi-commercial where it's limited traffic?
The answer to that question is yes. However, I'm just going to speak bluntly, probably three, four years ago, we met with developers who were interested in buying Mr. Pookie's property, and they had big plans for Dave and Buster's, you know, restaurant, and all this stuff, they had big plans. If they can't get a contiguous piece of property that's big enough to do what they want to do, they're not going to get the kind of person that wants to be at an interstate interchange that is the entrance into Ascension Parish. This is the only way we're going to change the character of that intersection. This is it. If we don't rezone this property, it's going to be like that until Mr. Pookie passes. And that's sad, but that's what it is. And if we don't rezone this property, it's going to stay like that for another 10 to 15 years. That's it.
But if we rezoned it to commercial and Target moves there, we've changed the character, not necessarily in a good way?
Target won't fit on 10 acres.
Well, I understand, I mean, it can be anything.
Well, Ricky, let me ask, I mean, something like this, I mean, it's close to the interstate interchange. Chances are, State Louisiana would not issue a driveway permit or, or an entrance for any kind of business off of 73 itself.
No.
I would be inclined to, I think I'd be safe to some...
No, it'd have to be off Seabro.
No matter what, it would have to be off of Seabro Road.
Correct.
And I don't think anyone's arguing the fact that the traffic and, and the road is substandard, the traffic is already terrible. I know they've tried to improve with a light already, but, I mean, there's just no assurances that that...
Whatever commercial development comes in, will have to look at that intersection, and they will have to make an analysis through our traffic engineers, through the state DOTD, to any improvements that can be made to improve the circulation. But I'll tell you, anyone who's driven any of these roads in Ascension Parish knows you don't want to be on 73 near Seabro any time in morning or afternoon traffic. You avoid it like the plague. So it's their job to find a retailer that wants... So it's their job to find a retailer that wants to be in that location, number one. And number two, that perhaps will spend some dollars maybe to realign that road, perhaps to add another turn lane, to do something. They're the ones who have to figure that out. That is a horrible place to be traffic-wise in morning traffic and afternoon traffic. But once again, Mr. Pookie's found a way to make ice business, firework business, seafood business, RV rental. You know, that has worked for fifty years. It will continue to work unless somebody comes in and buys all ten acres and does something different with the property.
I wanna see a map.
Any further public comments?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, if that were to happen, Ricky, and I mean, we would have the authority to force them to put in a double turn lane to, no?
Well, I would imagine a, a traffic impact study would be absolutely required.
Right. That, that Seabro Road intersection's gonna be graded an F. Whatever this development does, it's not gonna make it an F minus. It's still an F. Can they make it any better by providing some other something? I don't know. I'm not a traffic engineer. Can they do anything? You know, they're gonna have a dedicated turn lane into the development. I don't know. That, that will all be questions that when the scale of this development comes up, whether it's a restaurant, whether it's a hotel, you know, all of that is a different traffic generator. That's when you'll make that decision.
It's, it's a total disaster. The traffic entering I-ten headed west backs up past that intersection now. I mean, every morning, every morning, school or no school.
The problem is that Seabro is a unique.
Well, you, you've already spoken.
Yeah, but I'm, you know.
Do you want it, Mr. Chairman?
She spoke twice. Thanks, you got it twice.
Do we have any further public comments?
Look, it's, it's a unique road. I mean, you know, you can't compare it to seventy-three. I'm seventy-four.
Do you have any further public comments, please? Any further public comments?
And here's another angle to take too. I mean, like what you're saying is that unless the ten acres is opened up altogether, nothing would really come into play. But you, you spoke to realigning that road as well. If that realignment of that road makes it all of a sudden not viable to someone like, let's just say, Dave and Buster's, since we brought that up, we've now opened up that property to be developed to almost anything that could fit within that zoning?
Correct, but that, that, it's, the onus of fixing that intersection isn't on this piece of property. What I'm getting at is they're gonna do a traffic study that's gonna say what the impact is of this piece of property on the traffic. Is there anything they can do to improve it? You know, a Dave and Buster's, you know, who knows? I, I guarantee you, that's not gonna be a cheap piece of property to buy and whoever's buying it is gonna do their due diligence before they buy it.
Right.
You're not gonna get a Dollar General on that corner.
It's just, it's, it's a tough intersection. It is. It's a, it's, it's tough to figure out what to do with it.
Any further comments?
Can I speak to you on our Red灯?
Right here, please.
Okay. I live off of Bluff Road. I take Seabro Road every day. There's no question about it. There's a traffic problem there. But if you notice, highway, any other intersection we have, that there's multiple businesses on it. Multiple on corners of intersections off the interstate. I mean, I cannot believe that Ascension Parish is gonna pass up putting some kind of profitable business for the parish on the corner of a main that has nothing on it. We are, I mean, when I have to go out, I have to go either to Highway thirty or Baton Rouge to get ninety percent of my stuff done. Now, I don't know what is gonna be there. It's no buyers. I have no, I mean, so it's hard to say there's gonna be fifty restaurants there or a hospital. I don't think it'll be no adult bookstore or anything, but I'm just saying, I mean, it just seems with, it is an eyesore now that everybody, body passes through every day. But traffic is a problem all over Ascension Parish, not just here. They do have a lot of residential, but there's residential everywhere. I mean, there's, you take Bluff to seventy-four and you don't even have a red light there that you gotta try to fight on a daily basis. So, traffic, like I said, that, that's not even a question that is gonna be an issue there, but it's already, I guess, a standing issue alone and there's these issues all over the parish. But just to have something, what are the words I wanna use? That will look better in that corner than it does now would be, to me, a major improvement for the parish in general.
Lance, can I, I mean, I'm just kinda.
All right.
Lance, you uh, like, I saw on the map that it was zoned as a thousand foot away from the intersection. I mean, what is typically, this isn't zoned crossroads commercial. This is zoned.
Right, it's a mixed use.
Mixed use.
Correct, yes, sir.
Well, I mean, what is tip, how far do we typically go? I, I tried to look on the zoning map and just try to come up with a number on my own. It was tough.
Yeah, six sixty is roughly approximately where we go, but if it falls within that, well, you, you, we don't cut properties now. We actually go to property lines. So if it falls within that and it, we would go to that next, usually to that next property line that, that, that's further out. I mean, we don't stop right at six sixty, if that makes sense.
Is a thousand foot a stretch? Does this piece of property feel unique because it's so close to the interstate?
Yes, sir. I believe it's unique because of that. Yes, sir. Because it's that close to the interstate, yes, sir, and at that intersection.
I mean, six sixty from a thousands. Different, but it is unique, you know? I, I tried to come up with numbers on my own by looking at the zoning map, just looking at different intersections. It was hard to find a consistency, so it's good to hear a number at least. So, if there's any more public.
Any further comments, public comments? Response from commissions?
Well, there were a coup, there were a couple of issues. One is certainly the, the family that lives next to the property is concerned about being right next to something that has no idea what's gonna be there. But there was a suggestion of a possible concession of making the two front lots residential, keeping them residential. I don't know whether that would appease that situation or not. The other one, of course, is the traffic. And uh, traffic's horrible now.
That's a bad.
I don't, yeah, and I don't know that, that, you, you see all the little businesses and all the stuff that's there now. There's, and there's, they sell fireworks a couple times a year and there's, it's a, it's a mess. I don't know that it, I, I mean, there could be something built there that would actually be an improvement, frankly, uh, to what it is now. Especially if there, if the requirements based on the traffic study would require to make some improvements to the. I'm not, I'm not sure what you'd do. You'd have to probably four-lane a part of it in the front there to accommodate turn, or at least put a turning lane in, in the road to accommodate through traffic and, and traffic turning into whatever that business is gonna be. I know I, I, I wouldn't take Bluff Road, I wouldn't take Seabro Road again. I'd go all the way to seventy-three. If it got any worse than it is now, and I have to get there at six-thirty in the morning to.
To beat the traffic.
To beat the traffic.
Yeah, I agree.
Or six-twenty-five. I don't know. I, if, let me ask this. If um, if the applicant wanted to make a change on here, I'm not really comfortable with saying we want, we'll approve this contingent upon something else happening on here, would they just resubmit?
If they wanted to change two lots?
Tough question.
Yes or no?
Yeah, uh, I would think they would. I think to be safe, I think they would need to.
Yeah, because if, if that were always a possibility, it should have been, it should have been submitted in the first place. There were gonna be.
Yeah, they were gonna take that out.
Right.
Because it was advertised as, as it is, yes, sir.
To avoid confusion and something happening that's not intentional.
Right, yeah, it would be the, probably the best.
It would change, maybe it would affect one of the arguments that was made for the person, for the gentleman who lives next door to the property. It might be some, some buffer from whatever's built there, but it, it doesn't, doesn't, you know, doesn't really impact the traffic issue.
I mean, this would completely change the dynamic of the family that lives next door to it. But I also understand that the lines have to be drawn somewhere.
Right.
They, 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 they really do. I don't know why something can't be done with the property.
You know, what Ricky said earlier is, is a point, and that is whoever buys this very expensive piece of property has to know what they're gonna be able to do with it.
Right.
It's possible it would remain vacant forever.
And it could stay just like it is, that's right.
And it could stay like it is because there's gotta be some very special, there'd have to be some very special things done to, to make this from a traffic perspective acceptable to us.
Or to, to flow for the own, their, the business itself, I guess, even in and out for a business. I'm sure they don't wanna inconvenience customers. It's a tough intersection. It's, it's related to this college drive fiasco that they have where it's just gridlocked. You take a left and you sit, you know, and it's, it's close to that.
I have a question maybe from Ms. Stafford. If you took the four lots on the end and made them mixed use two and the rest of it regular mixed use, is that a feasible thing for a buyer to, or would they, they put one business on the entire property? I, I'm thinking of some sort of a buffer there that, that would, would make it a little bit better?
What?
The four lots would be cut in half. That's what Pookie's gonna keep on that end.
Yeah.
Cut them in half?
We looking at the whole five acres to be commercial, but they would take probably about a hundred and fifty by, say, a hundred and fifty or two hundred and make two lots there, seventy-five by a hundred and fifty, to put two res, the last two lots next to the residential property.
It would have to come back to us.
Well, I see they would make, make them lengthwise and turn this way. I got it, okay.
And so they would be the length right next to the house.
And that would be like a buffer then, I guess, or?
Well, they would build a house on it. The, the owner of the property of the five acres wants to live on the property. So he always wanted to take that property at the end there and build and put two lots there, one lot for his son, one lot for him to build on.
Why didn't, wasn't it submitted that way?
I apologize.
I, I think I have an answer because they'd have to subdivide the property first. How many houses are on those lots?
Okay, yeah.
So, one and a trailer, you know, if there's a property, if then, if the lines aren't in the right spot, you know, they physically couldn't, they have to subdivide it before we rezone it because we don't rezone half of lots.
Right.
That's right.
So, I mean, we couldn't do that tonight?
No.
No, it's an existing house on the end there, you know?
I would, I would imagine that after the sale of the property, you guys would come back and re-subdivide off these back two. You would remove the house and Mr. Pookie would build a new house, remove a trailer, do whatever you want to do on those lots.
That's right. They're gonna remove everything.
Right. They're gonna clear everything out to make it a sellable thing.
That, that sounds good, but how do we ensure that?
You don't.
How do you ensure what?
Right, we'd have to zone all or nothing.
That, that you actually do, that they actually do that. Well, I'd have to subdivide, subdivide it first and keep that as residential.
Then come back to us.
And request that the rest of it.
Yeah.
So they would have to subdivide it first and then reapply, is what you're saying? That's how I feel too, 'cause we have no line to define it on.
Okay, so would I be correct in saying that it would be okay for us to subdivide two seventy-five-foot residential lots to the end of the property by a hundred and fifty?
I don't know what the dimensions are here.
If it's RM, it's, it's gonna be ninety feet of frontage, roughly about one-eighty, yeah, one-eighty, one, one-eighty, one-eighty, one-ninety depth. So it's gonna have to be at least ninety feet of frontage, so it could be seventy-five.
It's hard to associate what the five acres is by looking at that.
Right.
It's, I, I, I know you keep referring to the five acres, but I mean, looking at the map, I.
I know, because it's all subdivided with different um family members.
Without being subdivided, yeah.
Yeah, it was a family petition also at one time.
What you were saying is that you wanted, you wanted the whole thing rezoned, but he was gonna still live on the property rezoned.
On the end of it. Yeah, 'cause you can, I mean, residential can live on commercial, commercial just can't be on residential.
But we can't guarantee that that would happen.
No, you can't guarantee that that would stay. If it's re, if it's rezoned commercial, anything can be built on there. That can be built on commercial, even if he intends to live there.
Okay.
He can live on commercial.
So you'd have to.
I would ask that they go back and refile so that we know what we're looking at, 'cause I'm.
Okay, refile and put those two lots at the end of the property?
Well, I'm not speaking for anybody else. I would just say, I'm not, I'm not saying if you do X, we approve it. I'm just saying, before we do anything and look at it, we gotta see what it is you're saying on a piece of paper. 'Cause it's, you're describing something that doesn't exist on this piece of paper.
Okay.
Kinda confusing.
Yes.
But I would ask that we draw it, come back and say, this, you know, we.
Is this being excluded from it? Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And work with these guys.
Would that be a simple division?
That's just.
So they, they could do it in, in, in-house, huh?
Can I ask a question? Is the thought that you're gonna create two lots all the way back to the lake?
That's right.
Because if that's the case, that is basically two-hundred-and-twenty feet. And so basically, you're talking about cutting these four, two A, two B, two, two C and two D into two lots vertically. And so two A is the only one that would get rezoned to mixed use, generally. That line is gonna shift over a little bit because it's two-ten and it only needs to be one-eighty.
I would just like to see that.
Right.
Yeah.
And come back. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, this, this is very confusing.
I think that would be more palatable in terms of, of the residence to look for. It still doesn't address the traffic issue.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't address the traffic issue and it doesn't address what Ricky was iterating to that.
No, the only, I, I mean, if it, if it were sold and there was a proposed development there, at least it would. Right now, there's no way to address the traffic issue from a developer perspective. Can't force anything to happen. We'd have to, the parish would have to come in and pay for something or whatever. But if a developer were to propose something, the developer could be required, would, would have to be required to make the improvements to the traffic situation. That's the only plus for the parish, really.
And it could be a plus for the people that live there as well. It, it really could, I mean, just.
I still won't use it.
You're still going through the school zone?
Unless it's, unless it's dramatically improved. And I think three-laning it or something would, would probably help a lot.
You have so much going on, two lanes, bottleneck in the one lane, you have Seabro coming in. It is.
Bring that up. That's a disaster.
So do we, do we deny it like it is an asset to be?
Logistically, do we deny this or do we?
You have three options.
Okay.
One, the applicant can voluntarily pull it. They can come back to us to do the simple division. The issue I see with the simple division is we can't create a lot that has a non-conformity. So if the line they wanna draw has a structure there, the structure has to be moved before the applicant. And if they're not ready to do that, that's a much bigger issue. So, one, they can, they can voluntarily pull it and, and try to work through that. Two, you guys can recommend denial, and if the council denies it, they have to wait a year before they come back. Or two, three, you recommend approval and then the council takes an action once again to approve or deny, and if it's denied, they have to wait a year. So there's really three options. They have to agree to pull it because if you guys simply deny it, they can't come back to this body for a year.
Right. Okay, that's big.
Are you mean to pulling the item?
Or, or they could take their chances with the council, I mean. Yes.
I mean, it's got to sell first.
The first thing it's got to do is sell before, before you get any further.
Wait.
I mean, you can't move that house. My brother-in-law got a house back there right now. And, and you can't put a line down the middle of his house. He's not gonna do that and I wouldn't do it either. But, on contention, if this thing would sell, this property would sell to somebody. Then this thing would have to, the ninety-foot would have to be kept off of it so Mr. Broke could move on that end of the property. Mr. Merrill Broke. That's all we asking for. I mean, I don't see what's so complicated about this. Other words, and it's not gonna be some uh, strip club or something gonna be built on. It's gonna be a nice, something nice. It's not gonna be sold very cheap.
What's complicated is if it's rezoned, there's no guarantee what can happen next year in terms of what might be built on that property.
Yeah, a lot can be, that's happening. First thing you gotta have a buyer.
Well, I understand. I'm saying, right now, we're talking about keeping a residential, call it a residential buffer between the existing residential. But if it's, but if it's zoned commercial, that doesn't guarantee it.
Well, it guarantees, because as long as this man's living, that he's not gonna sell his property. We got to put him on the end of that property before he'll sell it. He will not sell his property if he, if he's not given a piece of ground that, he does not wanna move off of Seabro Road.
But as long as he's living, and then what happens then?
Sir?
Right.
I mean, he's not gonna live forever.
Well, then that's, that's not my control or yours. I mean, we can only control today and tomorrow. We can't control what happens twenty years from now.
It may sell and, it may sell and sit there for ten years.
Sir?
It could possibly even sell and sit there for ten years. You know, there's so many unknowns.
I mean, I live on Old Jefferson Highway. Don't tell me nothing about traffic. I can tell you something about traffic. Y'all wanna talk about traffic, we can start talking about traffic.
It's everywhere.
Yeah, you know, traffic is a problem, okay? We created it and now y'all wanna say Seabro's a problem? Seabro is not a problem. Y'all live on Old Jefferson Highway.
I mean, this one's an exception with the taper down from two lanes down to one lane with intersection coming in. It's a lot going on.
Okay, we got people that know how to fix it. And whoever builds there or buys it gonna take all that in perspective. You know, they gonna, they gonna do, they gonna fix that problem to the best they can.
We have further public comments back there?
If we're thinking of two sections, if we're thinking of two sections for Mr. Merrill Bro to move into and leaving it commercial, what's to prevent him from doing the? what's to prevent him from doing the same thing next to me that he's already done in the front? If it's commercial, he can do whatever business he wants there.
That's my point.
So, and it doesn't fix anything by splitting it?
It doesn't fix anything.
I, I agree. I don't think it fixes anything.
And I could have, you know, the seafood market next door to my house again.
Yes. I agree. It's going to have to stop somewhere.
But I don't think that's an option. They opting to go with what happens here and take their chance with the council. Is that correct?
My suggestion of, of redrawing this up is, is to submit the two redrawn lots as, as keeping them as residential and then submitting the rest as, as changing the rest. That was what I was suggesting.
Not exactly.
Not that we redraw it and make it all commercial still.
Further public comment?
Yeah. I'm Ronald Bro. I was raised right there on, on the property on Seabro, and, uh, that's exactly my point. You wouldn't have to make the buffer zone commercial. You could leave it residential.
Well, that's what I.
On Mr. Bro's there. And, uh, another thing I wanted to say is, we were talking about the traffic. Well, I live back on a Ridge Road, which is off of the Bluff, and we have a traffic problem all over Ascension Parish, especially that area. There's no way, good way for me to get out at five o'clock in the afternoon. If you go to the Bluff, like they said, it's Bluff and Seventy-four, there's not a red light. You may stay there a half hour.
That's right.
If you go the other way, Perkins Road, there is a light, but you've got a big problem there. So many people coming down Perkins Road, and, and it takes you a while. They do have a red light, and you can't get out on Seabro, but it may take you a while. So anywhere you go, you've got a traffic problem. It's not just Seabro. It's all over the parish.
Yeah, they have high land out there. People want it. It's, it's growing in that area.
Do we have further public comment? That being said, floor closes for public comment. Motion for recommendation?
Gentlemen's willing to take his chances at the council?
That's what he said.
I, I move for denial.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second that. Take the chance at the council level.
So they didn't want to, they didn't want to pull the?
Didn't want. They want to take their chances with our recommendation to the council, take their chance with the council. We have to do something. The motion is to recommend denial. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
It has been seconded. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, the motion has been seconded?
Aye.
Aye.
So noted.
Yeah, I did. Yes, sir.
Well, you seconded it.
Yeah, seconded.
Next item. Eight C Hilton Haydale Properties.
Hi, my name is Kim Johnson, three seven three two seven Commerce Lane, Prairieville, Louisiana. I'm with Industrial Commercial Properties with my partner Leroy and Benay Thomas. We're looking at a rezoning, and it's actually a thirty-three acre tract of land on Saint Landry, just sort of the tract of land on Saint Landry that was being discussed a little bit earlier, that we were asking for a rezoning from conservation to light industrial, which is basically kind of staying in the same format of what's happening up and down the road. Light commercial, basically what we're looking at is developers, we have developed three other subdivisions that are commercial subdivisions in Ascension, would be like an office warehouse type of project. On the thirty-three acres, we're proposing to do about twenty lots only, which gives each lot about an acre to two acres to three acres tracts of land. What we're basically proposing at this time is that most of the businesses, which would be office warehouse type of businesses, would be operating through Monday through Friday. There not so much would be a weekend type of operation. We, when we've done our subdivisions in the past, we've always done subdivision restrictions, and I took a picture of some of the subdivisions, uh, type of buildings that we've done in the past, and basically what we do is we ask for some very front, you know, nice-looking fronts return on the end. And, uh, the due diligence that we've done on this piece of property is basically, it is right next to the sheriff's, uh, firing range, and so we went and talked to Sheriff Wally, and we asked him, you know, told him what we were proposing to do and that we were proposing to do light industrial. We also met with the councilman Travis Tucker and told him that we were looking to try to propose to do light industrial. And of course, with so much building in Ascension, we went to the trend seminar, you know, and it talks about how a lot of that area needs much more additional, um, light industrial in order to handle some of the commercial developments that are coming in to, or some of the businesses that are coming into the area. So we're asking for consideration to basically take this thirty-three acre tract of land and develop it into twenty acres and develop it mostly into office warehouse space.
When you say, um, office warehouse space, what, what, you're referring to something, I have in my head something along the lines of Industriplex?
Yeah, something like Industriplex. We developed, uh, like Hertz Equipment Rental, that's on Highway Thirty. We developed that, uh, industrial avenue there, what's called Ascension Industrial. Ruby Street's part of that development, so it's sort of an office warehouse lay-down yard. You know, you're pretty much like, you might have like a five thousand square foot building, twelve hundred office space, and the rest would be warehouse. A lot of the people that come into here would be, you know, like sometimes they're plumbers and distribution, I mean, small little distribution type of operations.
Staff?
Uh, the staff makes a recommendation to deny, deny the light industrial as requested due to the existing residential land uses in the area.
Yeah, there is a lot. What, Lance, could you speak to what's inside the city limits on the other side of Vindes? Or, yeah, like B-one, B-two, B-B-two-A? What is that zone?
That's actually ours, so, uh, that's in the parish. What's on the opposite side, that's in that gray color, that's in the city, and in the city.
Oh, no, that's what I'm talking about, on the north of the yellow?
Yes, north of the yellow, that's.
It's city limit?
Yes, it is a city limit. Yes, sir, yeah.
What are they?
Basically, right now, it's vacant land that I know of, and I think that's, uh, Cabello's or whatever, that's, that's in the back, if I'm not mistaken. That's way in the back part back there. I'm sorry.
But what is that chunk? I mean, I know, maybe you can't speak specifically to that chunk as far as the city goes, but what is that zone right now in the city?
No, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, sir.
Well, I know right, like, right across the street with the, where the map is, is that a lot of it is light industrial already up and down the street, and I've taken some pictures of some of the buildings that do exist up and down the street for light industrial. And of course, like any kind of restrictions on light industrial up against some of the residential areas, you are required to do the type of fencing that would be required.
So directly across the street is actually light industrial?
That's correct, sir.
But you'd be splitting this conservation, which people hold dear to their heart, I believe, sometimes.
And we're also like right up against where the sheriff's firing range is, so if you can, you know, kind of appreciate that, and it's almost across the street from Lamar Dixon.
This time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Anyone sign up? Any comments?
Yes. Leroy Thomas.
Could I ask the speedwayer, please?
Sure, certainly. Is Leroy Thomas here?
Yes. Can I ask the speedwayer?
You hear Leroy Thomas?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you wanted to further. Are there any other further comments?
Francis Rose?
Yes. Uh, Francis Rose, ninety-two oh six South Saint Landry. Uh, my property borders, uh, this property on the east and the south side, and my main concern is, um, with drainage, because my property drains to the back towards this property. And right now, my drainage is very bad. And, um, also, um, I was wondering where the road would be to going to this property?
I don't know if that's been specified. I don't think they have a proposed layout, do they?
Yeah, on, uh, the, at this point, there's no.
Is that what the Shelly Haydale land things are? That's, that's proposed?
That's private right now.
You live in the, um, one lane subdivision to the north of this one?
I beg your pardon?
You live in the, in the subdivision to the north of this? Nowhere?
No, no. My property borders on Saint Landry.
Okay.
So it's to the, um, east.
It's right in the front, right on Saint Landry.
Is to the south, and, and then in the back is to the east.
So it'd be on two sides of her?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay, I got you.
Also concerned with, uh, the extra traffic, which is terrible right now, of course, because of Lamar Dixon and the shooting range. So, uh, don't know how much, um, added traffic this would be in noise. But as I said, mainly the drainage is the main thing, uh, I'm concerned about.
Is Lakeland Estates in the parish or the city?
The what?
What, Lakeland, the subdivision?
That's in the parish. That's the, that's the parish.
Parish?
Yes, sir.
Are those empty lots or their houses?
No, sir, there's probably homes on those. Yes. Toward the back, there's probably vacant, but toward the front, there are lots on.
I was there yesterday and I can't even remember.
Any response to those, uh, concerns?
Well, in all of our developments, obviously, we would have to do a drainage impact study, and we would have to follow the guidelines for proper drainage. We do have some canals or little drainage ditches that are through there, and of course, we would have to make sure that we do not flood other people. You know, we know, we understand we have retainer pines that would be necessary, and also for whatever traffic impact study would, you know, would give us the information that what we would have to do to solve some of those issues would have to be solved as, obviously, as, as the other subdivisions have come across this evening. So we would have to meet the same guidelines as most of the other subdivisions would have to do.
And that property's grown up right now. It was, at one time, was kept bush hogged, and, uh, when I first moved there, they actually, uh, grew corn behind my house, but, uh, all of that's really grown up real thick right now, so all of that will have to be cleared. And that might impact the drainage, at least temporarily.
If, Lance, if this were rezoned or Ricky, I, I see these big chunks owned by Vince Diaz Properties, Inc., is the next move that Mr. Diaz will be in here asking for the same zoning, and we're going to have this gigantic office parks. Makes sense.
That makes sense and is possible. Um, I know Mr. Diaz has held on to that, and he has a lot of rental properties back there, um, that he currently manages. I just know that South Saint Landry Road carries a ton of traffic, and I'm not sure rezoning to any use that's going to put any more traffic on the road makes any sense.
Especially, I don't, it almost seems out of place. I mean, I'm, 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 the way I'm looking with residential in between whatever the city limits are, I wish we knew what, what the city limits, not that it would probably make a difference, but what was inside of the city limits. Um, even though it's light industrial across the street, is it, is it used to light industrial now across the street? It seems like there's a lot of houses on that side.
No, no, sir. With the city, I would think it's some kind of commercial. I don't think it's any industrial or anything like that. It's, you know, some, it's a commercial use.
Not residential?
Not that I'm aware of. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure.
But even where it is light industrial zone now across the street, I.
There are a few, few buildings, yeah, there are some homes between there. There are a few buildings that have been constructed recently, some small, smaller buildings, but, uh, the majority of that, yes, sir, is, is residential alone.
Okay.
Any further public comments?
Scott Williams?
I'm going to take Scott's spot if y'all don't mind. My name is Christian Watts. I live at ninety-two forty-four South Saint Landry Avenue. Y'all are asking where the city limits are. The city limits are right at Vindes Road. My property, Joshua, that you were asking about, was B-one, A-two, A. That's my property. I have two and a half acres there, and we had already approached Lance about actually rezoning that property at one point in time. We were told that we could not do it because it would be constituted spot zoning, and that y'all didn't do that. So, um, yeah.
That's a good.
You know, and y'all want to talk about traffic. Right now, Santa Monica graduation is going on down at Lamar Dixon.
Yeah, good luck getting home.
And, yeah, um, you know, we're, we're going to have a problem getting back to our homes right now. Uh, well, actually not getting there, but trying to cross back over to get into our houses. They are right that the other side, we live, if you go down Saint Landry, we live all on the, on the left side. On the right side is light industrial, commercial, whatever. There are three new warehouse buildings that just came up that type that you were talking about. So, I mean, eventually, and I do know Mr. Diaz will be back in here trying to get whatever property he has rezoned, because he's right behind me, okay? I know Mr. Diaz, he will do this. He, I don't know if he has this vision, but I had heard at one point in time that the vision was going to be that he wanted more industrial stuff back there, and not necessarily him himself, but other people as well. I'm not necessarily for or against this. My only concern is what's going to happen to the rest of us. You know, if you're going to rezon this thirty-three acres, I mean, I only have two and a half acres, but when you add mine to Scott's, who's next door to me, and Ms. Francis, who is next door to him, you get about ten acres there between all of us, and then there's some behind us. If you're going to rezon it one, rezon it all. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
What do you say to that, Ricky?
I say don't rezon the one, and then don't rezon the rest.
Further public comments?
Scott?
Yes, sir. Uh, Scott Williams, ninety-two thirty South Saint Landry Avenue. I'm, uh, they're neighbors, right in between them, and I also adjoining that property. And my question was, is if it, if it is rezoned, uh, is that going to make the taxes go up, the property taxes? And, yeah, I am too concerned about the drainage also. But, um, I, I was also wondering, uh, if, if that is rezoned, would that include all the adjoining property to that?
The proposal is just to rezon a very specific piece of property. It's not to, it's not a request by a bunch of property owners to come and rezon the whole area.
We wouldn't do that, we wouldn't consider that unless you had requested it.
Okay. Okay.
I'm tired. I don't want to interrupt.
Okay, thank you. And I can't answer the tax question. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know how that would go.
It wouldn't affect his taxes. It would have probably affect the taxes on this particular property, but I don't think he is would. He would still use it as residential.
To put it into perspective, let's say this doesn't get rezoned, and it's, it's right now zoned for conservation?
Yes, sir.
What could go in conservation? Someone can come into this, what, twenty acres, I think, we're looking at total? Is that what it is? And, and, and subdivide this into a neighborhood?
It's approximately thirty-three acres, sir.
Thirty-three acres?
And if you figure three houses per acre in a normal subdivision.
No, no, it'd be one home per acre. It's in conservation. The density is, yeah, the density is one unit per acre.
Okay, so that's what would potentially go in the place of this?
It'd be thirty-three homes, or thirty-three homes.
Just wondering what we're, what we're taking away from this property, you know?
And, and there would be an island in there of those two, um, that would remain conservation?
Yeah, Brian Haydale and Sherri Lynn Butley?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Those would stay conservation?
Yes, sir.
In the middle of?
Yes, sir.
That's a spot.
Yep. Yes, sir, that was what was requested, yes, sir.
Spots within spots.
Spots.
Well, in this purchase, the only thing that was available to us was thirty-three acres, so that's the only reason why the, it was cut out the way it was.
Okay. That's what they were willing to.
You know, as I said, the, the light commercial, the light industrial, excuse me, light industrial, it's already up and down that street there.
Yes, I agree.
Does that normally raise the value of the property around it when you rezon it light industrial?
Not necessarily. If you're, if you're still zoned conservation.
Okay, and one other question was, wasn't it proposed a while back that that road extends out and actually has an exit point on Loosemore? So that should help the, uh, the traffic problem?
That was part of the plan that got voted down by the voters in that election. That was in that plan.
So that's not going to happen?
Well, they're actually looking at that Edenborn extension now. It's going to come out by the second trailer park.
Goes through Edenborn.
Right, it's coming through.
Which is in the city.
Supposed to come through and touch L. Andrew Road, almost across the street from Lamar Dixon.
Okay, now, part of that land back behind us, not me so much, but is a flood zone. So how's that going to impact the drainage?
That's something that, that, that person developing that piece of property would have to mitigate. I mean, that would.
So there would have to be studies done on all of it?
Yes, extensive studies to make sure that they're not going to impact any surrounding properties.
Okay, so in the meantime, we're still going to live on a dead end?
That's great.
That goes nowhere. Okay.
Good point.
Thank you. Thank you.
Further public comments?
Yes, sir, I'm, uh, I'm Leroy Thomas. I am a partner trying to buy the property. I would like to answer one of the questions for the lady in the back. She said it's grown up, we're gonna bush hog it, we're gonna clean it up. Everybody's talked about the traffic. The traffic is horrendous everywhere in the parish. You also bought a comment up about the two houses that are being surrounded. They're not here opposing tonight. It is family heir property. I have approached them to purchase their homes if this is rezoned. My purchase agreement to buy the property is if I get it rezoned. And, you know, if there's anything else I can clear up for you, I'd be glad.
So there are two houses that are there right now on that piece of property with a road that goes to it? Oh, I see, it's a driveway.
It is a 60-foot right away.
I see.
It was a planned residential development years ago. It can be developed right now as one house per acre, which is 32 houses. I was talking to the sheriff, and the sheriff actually has sent one here tonight to let you know that it is at his approval that it be rezoned to LI instead of being houses built there.
And the two houses that would remain conservation, they, they were notified publicly just like everyone else?
I'm sure they were.
And they're not here?
Yes.
Looks like some nice houses were...
Well, I mean, that's what I just wanted to clarify that, you know, since that was a comment you had brought up.
Yeah, you're about to surround them with industriplex, and they have woods around them right now, and I'm surprised that they're not here.
It's gonna be nice.
And I wouldn't... Ma'am? Okay.
Her, her daughter lives in the house. I have spoke to her, her daughter is renting a house from her. She is aware of what's happening around her. It was her husband's, family's property that's been developed. These people want to sell the land, so somebody's gonna buy it, somebody's gonna develop it as something, whether it's me or somebody else. You know, you're gonna, they want to sell. Answer to Mr. Vince Diaz, only thing I can tell you is, this street that I would develop would not extend to his property to where he could come out that development. Whatever the distance might be that I have to stay off of his line, I would do so. And, uh, there is a public street at the rear of this property, which is Vivian Ann. And, uh, the parish did not black top it years ago, or eight years ago, and Lance said he would even like to see it go away, but I, I can tell you in the documents, Mr. Vince Diaz, um, he got the right to use this back in 1980, um, and to maintain it at his expense, supposedly, but it has not been maintained. He had the right to construct or build from the Haydale family. So, but, um, this street that we would hope to develop, you know, and again, we gotta go through traffic impacts, and if you ask me to do turn lanes or whatever, you know? But, um...
It's hard to grasp that, I mean, that's two nice houses with...
Could I ask the Sheriff's Department's guy to speak, just so y'all can hear the story?
I don't think he's volunteering. Either for or against, I'm merely here to answer any questions that you gentlemen may have.
Okay.
In reference to the firing range, hours of operation, stuff like that.
Of course, that becomes a concern, you, I mean, you guys are firing guns in, obviously, the opposite direction, but I mean, it's...
Hopefully. It's a little loud.
Yeah, that's another thing, I mean, right now, you, you're talking about changing woods into something that people would be occupying.
If I could add, this is also a pipeline on one side, on the south side.
There's a, a service to the pipeline, yes.
Yeah, you would have to deal with that in design.
Yes, sir. Yes. Again, we haven't even gotten into the plan or whatever at this time. My purchase agreement states if I get it rezoned, I purchase it. I mean, you know, that's, that's how my purchase agreement reads.
And I see the light industrial across the street, and I, I, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around leaving these two houses, I mean, I'm looking at a map now, and, I mean, they've got swimming pools in their backyards, and I, I know they didn't come here to speak against it, so it's hard to say.
He does have a shop, but he doesn't have a swimming pool.
And, I mean, you're just kinda hugging your arms around this, and, and I see the residential on the northern side, and I'm, I'm having a hard time convincing myself that it's not what I before decided as myself as saying it's spot zoning. I'm having a hard time with that right now.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, we, we have done spot zoning on one or two occasions when it was very clear that it made complete sense to do it. And I don't see that here, frankly. I mean, this looks like spot zoning that is not justified.
Thank you, yeah, I feel like it sticks out pretty hard.
And we, and we really do, you know, we were criticized pretty harshly for doing spot zoning, even when it's completely justified, and I don't see the justification for it here. How does everyone else feel about it?
We have, uh, I mean, as my partner told you, we had met with Travis Turner, the councilman, and he also would much rather see it LI than conservation or houses to be built there.
Really?
I mean, I don't have anybody here to speak for him right now, but I'm not standing here telling you a story.
So get his chance. I'm gonna have to get him out of Loosemore.
Mr. Lance brought, when I approached him with this, he told me the two people that you may need to contact of concern was the sheriff and Travis Turner, and I think he can tell you that. He gave me both of them's phone number. So I approached both of them, you know, in my due diligence time. So I'm, I'm just letting you know that both of them were, says they were in favor.
Any further public comments? Floor for public comments closed. Can I get a motion for recommendation? Approval or denial?
I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stand on what I was saying, as far as I'm concerned, it feels like it's standing out as spot zoning to me, and it, it doesn't really fit with having the residential on the top. There's plenty of room for industrial, light industrial that's on the other side, the entire other side of the road up to Lamar Dixon is zoned light industrial. There's plenty of that in that area that's not developed out as it is now, in my opinion, and, uh, I don't know, but that being said, I'm, I'm gonna put a motion on the table for denial.
Yeah, I know, I'll second that.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
So noted, unanimous? AD, Lamarck, Inc.
Anyone speaking on that one?
Anyone is here for Lamarck, Inc.?
Well, what does that mean?
That being said, do we remove that?
Do we reboot, or do we just still go with staff recommendations?
They're not there to present it.
You still have a public hearing.
That's their problem. This one, yeah, this one's odd.
Public hearing commissioners?
No public comment on this one at all?
Since they're not here and the staff has recommended denial, I will make a motion that we deny the application.
This one's out there.
I will second that one.
Yes.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
So noted, unanimous?
Who's seconding?
I did.
Uh, Mr. Burgess.
Robert did.
All right.
A E, Wilbert Sheets.
Yeah, this one's...
Ellen Jackson with McLan and Associates here representing, um, the Mcnames. They are asking for their property to be rezoned LI to conform with the, um, existing characteristics of what's already out there. Asking for your approval.
Stand.
Uh, the recommendation was to accept, uh, light industrial based on the light industrial being compatible with existing uses and the character with existing city zoning. The city zoning is light industrial that's surrounding them at this time.
All the way around.
All the way around, L, L1, I believe.
Is that across the interstate from the other piece we were just talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it's only...
I wanna make sure.
But it's butted up against? What color is it butted against?
It's that gray color, which is the city.
Well, south of it.
The gray color to this in the city.
That's along, no, wait. That's along, uh, Holiday, uh, Clarion, except the street.
What's the little color that ducks out?
Darla, yeah.
By itself.
And that's the only way you get to it, is Darla?
Yes, sir, that's the only way you can get to it, is South Darla, is that the dead end, South Darla?
What is this, this piece? What is that little piece poking out right here? On the other side of the interstate is what I'm asking.
That's Vince Diaz's, over here.
What is this, though? What is this zone?
That's light industrial. Yeah. Oh, I see what you, yeah.
Lance, all of that yellow that I see across the bottom of the map?
That's, that's not part of it, that's their family property also. They'll be coming in at a later date. At this point, it's just her property.
No, my question is, what is that zoned?
Oh, conservation, yes, sir, conservation.
Is this the termination point of the road study that's being argued in the Gonzales City Council?
I'm not sure.
Good point.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, well, it, uh...
Because it, it's odd that they have a piece of conserva, that we ha, it's odd that, A, we, we own...
Circles, I think, right here.
But that's not annexed into the city.
Well, I, this is my thought, is that the family at the time, when they were there annexing, they didn't wanna be part of the city.
Really? I mean, that is like a bubble poking out on that side of the interstate.
I agree, you can ask, one of the family members are here, but that's just my take.
What are you saying, what are you saying, Josh?
They said it's 30, but you can't get to 30.
I'm saying, it looks like it's odd that that, that the parish didn't draw its line at the parish, at the interstate. And it's a bubble poking out on the other side, much less that that, part of that bubble is conservation, and now we wanna make a little sliver inside of the pa, even though it's surrounded by light industrial on the, it's all city, I think, all around it.
Yeah, all of it is a city.
But that little bubble south of it is parish, and that's conservation.
Well, until next, next meeting.
But what, what's the point of that?
You're saying they didn't want to be annexed into the city?
Yeah, why? And, and I think that's what he's up here to ask again.
No, my name is Wayne Sheets, and, uh, mine'll be coming up, and I wouldn't, didn't quite catch the deadline. I live next door to my sister. But Vince Diaz owns at the end of the road. He brought that in, he had that annexed into the city at a later date, when the city had come through and left us out.
Really?
Yes, the, the city comes down to center of Darla, and Mr. Vince has the, the end portion of, of that, 'cause he has land across, just like we have land across the interstate on him.
Yeah, interstate splits you.
Right, the interstate split the, the two properties.
Are you gonna be annexed into the city? Do you anticipate that you'll be annexed into the city?
No.
There's no reason for the city to take that little bubble into their system?
No.
I mean, it just looks odd, I mean, it's a small sliver of land that's...
But he had, he had, he is actually annexed into, into the city at a later date, yeah.
Very interesting.
Yes.
I think, I think I am correct that that's where the road...
I would imagine that if I was building a service road between, uh, the interstate intersections, that these properties would be affected by that, which, by the way, the highest and best use for any piece of property is condemnation, so if that property was to be a service road, it would be the highest value.